Good evening to our Pitt County citizens, those who are here in the auditorium with us, and those that have just joined us via TV. We're thankful that you're here. This is the October 18th, 2023 Planning Board meeting, and again, we appreciate your being here. We do call this meeting to order. Could ask Ms. Tabitha if she would to call the roll.
Fred Austin, Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Lisa Ellison.
Here.
Thompson Forbes.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Minnie Johnson Anderson.
Here.
Steve Little.
Here.
Charles McGoughhorn.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman, we received notice that Molly Oldeman would not be present tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. At this time, if you would, join me as Mr. Don Brown leads us in prayer, and then Mr. Lyman Hardy will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, we humble by down this afternoon, Lord, and ask you the blessings and bless those that are present, and guide us as we conduct the business of this planning board this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
Place the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair would accept a motion for the approval of the minutes of our June 21st, 2023 meetings. Been a little while back.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If we approve the minutes, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. The motion is approved. At this time, I will open the board meeting up to public addresses to the board, if there are any, any public addresses at this time. If not, I will close the public address to the board. Mr. Rhodes, at this time, we're going to talk about some reappointments and appointments to the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good to be back with you tonight. You've got a full listing in your package tonight, but I did want to go ahead and first introduce your new planning board member, Ms. Lisa Ellison. This is her first meeting with you. She was by our office yesterday for an orientation session. She's been duly sworn in by TAB, and so she's ready for voting action tonight and ready to be with you. So Ms. Ellison, thank you for your willingness to serve on the board. Also, we've got two reappointments. Ms. Minnie Johnson, you just joined us, but you had a partial term, so you've been reappointed for a full three-year term now. And then Fred Austin just got here, we'll note that, and he has been reappointed for District Four. So again, thank you for your willingness to be reappointed and serve again on the board. So with that, Mr. Chairman, this is the beginning of your new year. October is the time for you to consider new officers. So with that, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, as maybe your last official action, direct me to bring up your attorney so he can lead you through the election of officers.
And I'll be happy to do that, but in the meantime, can I make a couple of comments?
You're the Chair.
And that's in saying that for Mr. Fred Austin, I congratulate him on being reappointed and coming back to us, and also to Ms. Minnie Johnson. Appreciate you accepting that and being back with us, and to recognize also the fact that Mr. R.J. Hendy was with us, and he has retired or served off the board. So we appreciate all these folks' services and expect even more going forward, okay? So much appreciated. Mr. Rhodes, would you carry on?
Okay. We have Mr. Matt Gibson, your Assistant County Attorney here tonight, that will lead you through your election of officers for the new year. Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. As Mr. Rhodes stated, it is the October meeting, so we will need the election of both the Chair and Vice Chair. So I'll try and take you through that tonight. I will open up nominations. Once nominations are closed, we will vote on the last nomination and proceed forward. If the last nomination receives a majority vote, that will be your chairman. If not, we will move to the nomination that was prior to that. Once the nomination for, or the election of the chairman has occurred, we'll move to the Vice Chair at that point, going the same route. Any questions? Okay. So at this point, I would open up the nominations for Chairman of the Planning Board.
I'd like to make a statement and a motion, please. Steve, for the last two years, you served as our President, I mean, as our Chairman, you've done an outstanding job, and I'm real proud of you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments.
But in the meantime, when you on here, your Vice Chairman stepped in, and it was just like he was still here, he did an excellent job. And on that, I'd like to nominate David Davenport.
And I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further nominations at this point? Okay, we'll close the nominations. I believe Mr. Davenport. And so at this point, we'll have a vote. All in favor of Mr. Davenport for Chairman, please raise your right hand. Seems like it's unanimous, Mr. Davenport. As the Chairman, I can proceed with the Vice Chair nomination, or you can do that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And at this point, any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Don Brown.
I second that motion.
Any further nominations at this point? Okay, close those nominations. And so Mr. Don Brown has been nominated. All in favor of Mr. Brown as your Vice Chair, please raise your right hand. Seems to be unanimous again. So we have the Chair and the Vice Chair. At this point, I believe, first order of business, Mr. Chairman, would be the appointment of the Executive Secretary.
I know, Nate.
I'll just take you through that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. So the rules of procedure, as well as our ordinance, state that the Planning Director shall serve as the Executive Director, and so that would be your first order of business, both a motion and second would be needed, and then a vote on that for your Planning Director to be your Executive Secretary of the Planning Board, which shall administer its activities.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Second the motion.
Okay, who seconded? I had two minutes.
Mr. Hardy. There you go.
All in favor?
And Mr. Chair, with your election, if you don't mind, we're going to take a short break to reorganize folks around the desk, and so we're going to take a break, and if we'll go to break, we'll bring you back up.
I would like to also say thank you to Mr. Steve Little for his service and for the past two years. He's been a great role model, and I hope Mr. Brown and I can continue on that same path. So, as our continue, let's get this party started. We'll go with Mr. Ben Rogers. We've got a rezoning request to go with.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. We do have one rezoning request this evening. It has been submitted by Gripton Solar LLC. It's for five different parcels, so I'm going to go through them real quickly. The five parcels are owned by William Scotty Smith and Sandra Lee Smith. That's parcel number 85103. Mary Jarvis, that's parcel number 11971. The George J. Whaley Life Estate, that's parcel 43259. Thomas &amp; Trudy Tyson, that's parcel number 18643. And Christopher Jarvis, that's parcel number 11968. The properties are located on the southern side of East Hanrahan Road, both sides of Brown Hodges Road, both sides of NC 118, just west of Stokes Town St. John's Road, and the request is to go from Rural Agricultural to Rural Agricultural Conditional District to operate a solar energy facility, also known as a solar farm. A little history on this site. In 2020, December 2020, back when this process for solar farms was a conditional use permit, it went directly to the Board of Commissioners. At that time, a different solar farm company had submitted an application for a smaller site that included one of the parcels we'll be looking at this evening. That was parcel 18643 and 10521. That solar farm was never developed, and the conditional use permit expired on January 11th of 2023. Again, this new application we're looking at this evening is for a different solar developer. Again, the approximate size of this project is 941.66 acres. The one that was approved a few years ago was 415 acres. Location of the site is down in Southern Pitt County, just east of the town of Gripton jurisdiction. You see there, the pink is the Gripton's town limits, and the blue is their ETJ. Some site pictures of the proposed project. This is looking at the site from East Hanrahan Road. This is an existing farm building on one of the parcels. This is looking west on East Hanrahan Road, and east on East Hanrahan Road, then going down a little further east along East Hanrahan Road to the intersection of Griffin Whaley Road. That's looking at it from that intersection. That's looking down East Hanrahan Road, again, towards the west, and the east along East Hanrahan Road. This is looking south on Griffin Whaley Road. The proposed site is on the right-hand side of this road, so it does not include the left-hand side there. A little bit south of East Hanrahan Road, kind of parallel, is Brown Hodges Road, and this is looking at the intersection of Brown Hodges Road and Jack Quinterly Road, that intersection, that property there you see. This is looking west towards the town of Gripton on Brown Hodges Road, and then this is east on Brown Hodges Road. This is looking south on Jack Quinterly. A little bit further on that same road, kind of going through, and the proposed project is for either side of that dirt path there. Then we get down to the NC 118. This is looking at the northern side of 118, and this is looking east on 118, and this is west, looking back towards Gripton. And the proposed project is on both sides of 118, so that parcel on the left side of the screen as well, and there's another photo of it. There is an existing solar farm. It's within the town of Gripton's planning jurisdiction, so it went through their town for planning approval, and that's just a picture of that adjacent solar farm. And just to give you an idea real quickly, these five parcels, or I think four parcels right here in the pink, that is that project that is right adjacent to the property, so we're looking at this evening. The Envision Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan that was adopted earlier this year does designate this entire area that we're looking at this evening as agricultural, and that designation does include prime farmlands that are vital to agricultural production within the county, and activities include agriculture, forestry, and limited low-density residential and commercial or institutional uses. Located near strategic agricultural lands and surrounding areas, the uses include agriculture, agribusiness, forestry, limited commercial, single-family properties, and occasional low-density, small-scale residential subdivisions, utilities as on-site septic systems, and community water, and density is generally less than one dwelling unit per acre. The existing land use in the area, you see the site is mainly consisting of agricultural and undeveloped land. To the south, that brown area within the zoning area, that's an existing cell or TV tower there, so that's why that's kind of shaded in brown for that government slash utility. Otherwise, you see the area is a majority agricultural and residential uses. The blue parcels, those I believe are all churches. The current zoning of the area is pretty much all RA, rural agricultural, with a couple of commercial. You see those reds at those intersections there. And the RA district, it is primarily intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed throughout areas that are principally characterized as rural in nature. This district reflects the diverse nature of land uses within predominantly rural areas, and therefore permits a wide array of land uses. A conditional zoning district, which is what we're looking at this evening, does allow for approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to assure that the compatibility of the proposed use with the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties, and again, the proposed use this evening is a solar farm. The zoning ordinance does lay out some development standards in Section 8EE of the zoning ordinance. This includes, but it's not limited to, a minimum 50-foot setback from all property lines and a minimum of 100-foot separation from any residence, and for the inverters that are part of the project, they have to be 150 feet from the inverters to the residence. Maximum height of any equipment and structures is 25 feet. The submittal requirements include a site plan, standard drawings of the components, copies of lease agreements and solar easements, evidence of utility interconnection and decommissioning plans and cost estimate. All those were included with our application packet and should have been in your agenda packet. Also, they require structural requirements. They must meet all building code requirements, and underground electric wiring is required, fencing and screening requirements, signage with emergency contact information, and abandoned equipment must be removed after one year of inactivity. So this is the site plan we did receive from the applicant. We've kind of spaced into two separate areas, so kind of, and I'll get to it in just a second, but just north of Brown Hodges Road and then south of Brown Hodges Road, since it is such a large project. So this is the area north of Brown Hodges Road. There are some wetlands and some exclusion area on the property, so you'll note that the entire rezoning area is approximately 941 acres. However, all of that is not proposed to be solar. So these wetlands will not include solar panels. The yellow there is where the solar panels are proposed. The inverters are the red dots outlined there. It's the substation and the proposed laydown area, and as well as the existing overhead utility line. And then the southern part of Brown Hodges Road, again, there are some exclusion areas and wetlands that would not be permitted to have solar panels. There is 100-year flood plan. You see there, it kind of cuts right on the edge of this property. For whatever reason, that area to the west of that was not studied, so therefore, it's not included within that 100-year flood plane. The developer would not be allowed to put anything in the wetlands that is shown there, and you can kind of see where that stops the edge of that anyway. The inverters, and then again, the overhead utility lines that are existing. So planning staff does find that this request is consistent with the Envision Pitt County 2045 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as agricultural on the future land use map, which allows limited commercial uses. In addition, there's a significant amount of wooded and wetland areas that provide spatial separation and screening between the site and adjacent residential uses. Staff also finds that this request is reasonable and is in the public interest because the request is for a conditional zoning district, and spatial separation and screening will be required as outlined in the Pitt County zoning ordinance. Additionally, there is an existing solar farm on adjacent property, and the proposed site will not generate a significant amount of traffic or noise, and will therefore have minimal impacts on the surrounding area. So staff does recommend approval of the request, subject to the development standards of Section 8EE of the zoning ordinance, and recommends the following additional conditions. So no zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for approval. To the max extent possible, the site shall utilize existing vegetation in order to visually screen the facility from adjoining properties and public rights away. If existing vegetation cannot be utilized, a 10-foot wide landscape buffer yard planted in accordance with the requirements of Section 10H of the zoning ordinance shall be provided around the perimeter of the facility. And a landscaping plan indicating the proposed screening shall be submitted to Pitt County Planning with the site plan for review and approval. A soil erosion and sedimentation control plan is required for development of this property that results in land disturbance over one acre, and the site must comply with Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance for nutrient control. The nutrient loading and peak flow calculation shall be reviewed and approved prior to any improvements involving more than one-half acre. Provide a 50-foot riparian buffer on all stream features present on the site, and obtain all required permits from Pitt County inspections, and finally, obtain any required driveway permits from NC DOT and comply with all requirements for access to the subject property. So public comments will now be entertained by the Planning Board. The board will then make recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who are scheduled to hold a public hearing on November 20th at 6:00 PM. And Chairman, we did receive two written statements, if you don't mind me reading those first before we go into the folks that have signed up tonight. I believe y'all do have a copy in front of you this evening.
Sure. Ben, first, does anybody have any questions for Ben before we get into public comments or anything? Am I having questions? Okay.
And I'll read these two written statements that were submitted to our office. The first one was submitted by Anita Cox. She just had a simple statement. Please deny the solar company new zoning request in Gripton, North Carolina. I'll make sure that's entered into the record. And then the second submittal we had was from Charles Owens. This was addressed to James Rhodes, Pitt County Assistant County Manager for Planning and Environment, Mr. Steve Little, Chairman, and the Pitt County Planning Board. I'm writing because of my inability to be present at your meeting where you will be taking comments concerning the request for a zoning variance slash change of several tracts by Gripton Solar LLC. I respectfully ask that deny this request. I sincerely believe that an industrial use, whether it be light, medium, heavy, dense, et cetera, should not be adjacent to any residential properties, even with meager setbacks and buffers. I believe that they hinder normal ways of life. They prohibit a person's pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness as afforded by our Constitution, and they either reduce nearby property values and/or they make them much harder, or makes them much more difficult to sell. I know that your work is significant and meaningful. I am also confident that it is difficult at times. I applaud you for your efforts. Thank you for considering my request. Sincerely, Charles F. Owens Jr. of 735 Fairlane Drive, Gripton, North Carolina. So those are two that we did receive, so I want to make sure that that was read aloud and submitted to the record.
All right. Thank you. So we'll have public comments. So I believe the first three people I've got here on my list are with the solar company, John Esquie, Nicole Miller, and Chris Sandifer. I don't know if all three of them want to speak, or if just one. Okay, come on up. Just for everyone speaking, just give your name, your full address, and just understand that you will have a timed three minutes to speak.
Great. Thank you, Chairman and Planning Board of Pitt County. My name's John Esquie. I work at Cypress Creek Renewables out of Durham, North Carolina. Our address is 5300 South Austin Avenue, Building 300, in Durham. Today, I'm presenting Gripton Solar LLC. It is proposed facility, and outside of the town of Gripton, has been presented. A little bit before we get into the project details, just kind of want to present myself and also Cypress Creek Renewables. I'm a North Carolina native, went to UNC Chapel Hill, graduated in 2017, and really honored just to be here to present a project to you all. So just a little context about Cypress Creek. We own about 150 assets and solar, existing solar farms in North Carolina, and operate over 100 for our existing customers. We have a 24/7, 365-day control center based out of Durham, North Carolina, that operates and maintains kind of the headquarters of all once these facilities are constructed. This is just a proposed facility. It is not guaranteed to achieve operation with any favorable approvals today. It has been submitted to Duke Energy in September of this month, and we'll hear back next year if it's been awarded, and that moves on to certain major milestones. A project submitted of this nature will not achieve construction till the 2027 timeline. So a little more detail. Cypress Creek, we really hold strong in believing that we're a responsible developer. We like to get involved with the community early and often. It's why we're here today. We were here last week with members of the surrounding community. We sent out mailers and kind of let them know of the proposed facility and offered a space for them to come in, raise questions and concerns about the proposed land use. Just some context about the market in which we're in today. Duke Energy is required to kind of procure clean renewable energy sources mandated by law, based with the kind of bipartisan passage of law with the Utilities Commission in North Carolina, and solar energy is one of those styles of electricity that they're looking to procure. Some context, we are kind of regarding the community engagement. We have annual scholarships at the Cape Fear Community College, and also we do kind of hands-on learning initiatives through a company called BetaBox, where they go to local schools and districts to essentially educate STEM fields of learning to necessarily not, you know, maybe a school doesn't have those, and we provide the opportunity for them to learn. With me today, Nicole Miller, my senior developer, along with our expert witnesses, Chris Sandifer, who is professional engineer licensed in the state of North Carolina. We have Nick Kertlin, who is a professional property appraisal licensed in the state of North Carolina, and Colin Tarrant, our legal counsel. So I'm going to shift over to a little more specifics about Gripton Solar as Ben proposed. So we're looking at about 580 acres of disturbance, and roughly 520 of solar of that 960-so acres of the entire conditional rezoning. With the site plan that we submitted, we have been within, all the setbacks and vegetative buffers have been implemented in the site plan as a part of that community meeting we had last week. There were concerns by some of the northern residents that their view shed would be taken away. So we've entered into, we've provided Ben within a vegetative plan that's essentially going above and beyond that requirement, doubling the standard vegetative buffer, adding in a whole layer of evergreen trees that will grow and essentially preserve that view shed and maintain the integrity of the landscape.
John, I believe your three minutes are up, so.
Yes, I'll stop there. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name's Chris Sandifer. Thank you for hearing me. I live at 3118 Green Road, Spring Hope, North Carolina. I'm independent consulting engineer hired to represent this project. I'm a licensed engineer in a dozen more states. I'm electrical contractor, unlimited classification in the state of North Carolina. I've got 100 acres that I own that are under panels on my own farm, and I do farm still. So I serve on the Planning Board in Nash County, where we have approved 37 of these solar farms to date. I'll just give you a little bit of background. I just want to say, I'm here to answer questions if you have any, or address any concerns you may have, but without any hesitation, equivocation, this facility as designed will not impact the health and safety of anyone in Pitt County. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I want to ask Mr. Sandifer. Of the 941 acres that the company is seeking rezoning of, how many, what percentage of that is covered by impervious surfaces?
Well, less than one-tenth of 1%. I mean, there will be some.
One-tenth of 1%?
Yeah, a very small area. The panels themselves are not considered impervious by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, but there will be some little equipment pads, and probably around 25 of those that are probably 10 by 10. So you take.
And the one reason I ask is, the picture of the adjacent one looked like it was a very tight configuration of solar panels that were, you know, chock-a-block. I don't know if this is different, but you're saying, you're saying that the solar panels are just a tiny imperviousness, and that the pads are not?
The pads are concrete, and they're considered impervious.
Right.
And so, but the panels themselves, the rain hits them and just flows off of them, and replenishes the water supply, just like it's grass that'll be planted. It's level, so it's not going to be a lot of erosion or runoff, and so that water goes right into the soil, just like it'd be if the panel was not there. So that's the reason Department of North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality.
And I'm just trying to understand that.
Right.
Because when I was looking at the picture, it just looked, it looked really tighter than any solar panel configuration I'd ever seen, because I mean, I've seen solar panels,
Right, right.
And they're like this. So.
Well, these are actually going to be rotating. These are actually on trackers. So part of the day, early in the morning, they're going to be facing east, and part of the day, they're going to be facing west in the afternoon. And you know, if it rains then, it just hit the ground directly. At noon is when you would see the most surface area looking straight above. But once again, they are on an angle, and the water will just hit it and wash them all and go right into the ground.
So you would project and predict that there is no effect whatsoever on drainage for adjoining owners, right?
No, no, absolutely. I mean, it would be no different than what's there now. In fact, it'd be less. If there's row crops there, not all of it is row crop, but I do row crop, and then sometimes you have hard rain, you have runoff. But if you have a grass cover and you have a hard rain, you don't have that kind of velocity. Water velocity is a lot slower with a grass cover than it would be a plowed field. So for the portions that were converted from row crops to panels, there would be actually lower water velocity.
Right. I understand. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions from?
Mr. Austin?
Thank you. You spoke of the, your colleague spoke of the vegetative buffer. How much of that is going to be resonant and highway-facing?
I would defer to the developer. I'm more the health and safety, the technical guy, but I mean, I'm sure he can answer that.
I can delay that question, or we can?
Yeah.
John, you can come on up.
So we propose doubling the standard buffer. So we proposed doubling the standard buffer requirement, Pitt County's in section, I think it was 10H. It's essentially the standard requirement and an additional row of evergreen trees that are growing up to heights of 50, 60 feet on the northern edge of the property, so they won't shade the panels, however, it's going to essentially make this solar farm unviewable from the directly adjacent properties. Yes?
Do you have the landscape buffer?
Yeah, I have some copies of the landscape buffer, I've provided Ben, I'm happy to pass around a couple more.
Let me show the area John's talking about, I believe, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but these properties here along East Hammerhand Road, if we can get that up on the screen for everybody.
Yeah, it starts here.
Wait for it to pop up on their screen. Thank you. Yeah, so if you want to take the mouse and kind of show that area y'all are talking about specifically.
Yeah, so we had some residents come out here in these surrounding properties and just voiced their concerns that their view shed's going to be just ruined by the solar, and so that's why we've proposed doubling the requirement, bringing in that extra layer of evergreen trees, and it would essentially be along this entire, oops, sorry, let's go previous. Yeah, it would be along this entire kind of northeast edge that surrounds us. This is all naturally, has a natural vegetation buffer via trees, so it's not required here, but a man-made vegetation buffer where the green area is not shown, has been proposed.
Okay, Mr. Austin?
Yes, so that covers the residents adjacent, what about the highways itself?
So the highways would just be the stand, we'd be complying with the standard requirements of the Pitt County ordinance there? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any more questions for me?
Anybody?
Yes.
I may ask.
Yes.
So you mentioned that these are rotating panels, does that produce any kind of noise?
No, ma'am. It's very, very slow, like the clock. I mean, they just track the sun, so they move very slow. You can't see them move, you can't hear them move. They are moving.
And once you, once they are, if you have them, how long are they expected to last before replacement or anything?
I would say a project like this typically has lifespan of 40 years.
And what about glare off of the panels? Any glare off those panels to adjacent properties?
I understand. You have glare when light hits at an incident angle that is just very shallow, and since these track the sun, the sun's raised at a normal angle, a 90-degree angle to the panels, so there is virtually no glare. They do have an anti-reflective coating on it. The only time you could possibly get glare is if there was a high wind condition that they were preparing for, and they would turn them flat. So it might be like during a hurricane or something, you don't want to leave them like this and make a big billboard out of them, so they turn them flat, and so, but those high wind conditions probably got weather, clouds, and they pour off, not going to be a lot of direct sun anyway, but that would be only potential for glare would be during a high wind condition when they were preparing for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sandifer, appreciate it.
Mr. Nick Kirkland is going to speak to you on property value.
Okay.
Hi, yeah, I am also one of their experts, however, my name got further down the list. It's Nick Kirkland.
Okay.
I'm with Kirkland Appraisals, the address is 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina, Virginia, and Kentucky. We completed a property value impact analysis in order to determine if the proposed solar farm would have any impact on the property values of the adjoining neighbors. To that end, we've looked at, over the past decade, thousands of solar farms, and what we found is that most solar farms are located in primarily areas with agricultural and residential adjoining uses. Everybody thinks a solar farm goes on an industrial tract, but the reality is that's not where they're built. They're built on previous farmland to basically land bank it for the next 20 to 40 years for future use of whatever after the solar farm is gone. But it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will be in harmony in the area in which it's to be located, and that's based on looking at, oh, thousands of solar farms, and they're all utility scale just like this, and the majority of those are from the southeast and North Carolina. Now, to determine whether or not a solar farm could impact the adjoining property value, we do a really similar analysis as to what you would have done if you were getting your house appraised or your land appraised. When you're getting an appraisal done, the appraiser's going to look for three to five similar nearby comparables, make adjustments, and determine what your property should be worth. Then what we do is we find a home that is sold next to an existing in-the-ground solar farm and find three to five comparables. We make adjustments and compare them to this property next to the solar farm, and then determine how much should that property next to the solar farm have sold for. Then we find out, what did it actually sell for? Did it sell for more than the comps, less, or about the same? We've got 90-plus examples that show that properties next to solar farms sell for similar prices as those not next to the solar farms. That means in terms of appreciation, marketability, as well as actual sales price, homes next to solar farms sell for the same prices and same, and similar time periods and appreciate at similar rates as nearby homes that do not adjoin a solar farm. In conclusion, it's my professional opinion that this proposed solar farm will not impact the adjoining property values, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkland? Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We have the last one.
Come on up. Nicole?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much for having us here tonight, we're excited to talk to you. My name is Nicole Miller, I'm a senior project developer with Cypress Creek Renewables, address is 5310 South Austin Avenue, Durham, North Carolina, 27717. John and my colleagues addressed a lot of the things that I was going to get to if they hadn't, so that's good on me. The main thing that I wanted to come up here today is to talk about not only our plans for this specific site, but our plans for the community. I think sometimes there's a fear whenever developers come in, that we're going to come in and get our development permits and then never talk to people again. I want to say now at Cypress Creek, we are very interested in continuing in this community and being a part of this community for the long term. We met with the economic developer, the Economic Development Director earlier, we're part of the chamber, we're working with the schools. As John mentioned, we met with some of the neighbors last week, a meeting we didn't need to have, but we wanted to have, that helped us inform design changes to this. Our goal is to be a long-term neighbor, and that's something that we take very personally. Again, John and myself are both North Carolinians, we both are raised in families here, and we feel like this is something that is a really good use of this land. The other thing that I'll point to, and I'll be brief, I think sometimes people are scared that, you know, one solar farm develops here, that there are going to be a lot of solar farms. I want to emphasize that this is a particular tract of land that is very, very, very suitable for solar, right? So in any given county, there really aren't this many tracts of land that suit for solar. By that, I mean we have clear land with a transmission line coming through. So for one of the things we talked about earlier was, you know, what are the land use plans for the county? I do want to emphasize that this particular project, it's very unlikely that you would see 10 of these pop up in the next year. This is likely to be one of very few projects in your county, and to that extent, it's one that could end up creating a significant amount of tax revenue for other county services. That's all I have for now. If you've got any questions, happy to answer them, otherwise, I think, you know, we're happy to answer people's questions here.
So there's a solar farm adjacent to this site, right?
Yeah.
But you guys don't have anything to do with that?
We built that site originally, and then we sold it in 2017, 2018, but that was part of what we call like the earlier, you know, solar boom in North Carolina, those smaller sites. These large-scale sites that I'm talking about, they're much harder to cite. We really needed very specific type of transmission line, a very specific type of grading. So the larger ones, we, not likely. And I will say too, for y'all, we're going to leave our contact information, we do understand this is an ongoing conversation, and we do want y'all to be able to come up, I'm sorry, we're going to leave our contact information in case you guys have questions. We do understand this is an ongoing conversation, and we want to be able to answer questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think I heard too that it'll be 2027, I thought we're actually in production, if you would. And then I also heard that we're talking about the life of a solar farm being 20 to 40 years?
Forty years.
Forty years? I most, I won't see that, okay? But I'm just curious, at the end of the life of the solar farm, what happens to the equipment and everything that's there? How's it disposed of? What happens?
Well, I was going to, I would say, they are being taken care of now, because when you have construction, you often have damage. So backhoe or somebody dropped them or something, so there are three companies I know of, there may be 100, but I know of three that I've used that will actually give you a certificate of recycle, but it basically says that 100% of that solar panel is recycled, none of it is put into a landfill. They're very valuable, there's a lot of valuable metals and commodities in them, and they would not discard them anyway, but they're, as opposed to foam, which may be 50%, or this monitor up here, which would be less than 50% recyclable, these are 100% recyclable by these three, could somebody throw them in a landfill? They can be thrown in a landfill, there's nothing hazardous about them, there's no reason, you can't put one in a landfill, but it's just a waste of good money.
So are, just curious, are there requirements down the road that says that the equipment would be removed and we just won't see ghost solar farms down the road?
Chris, I... So first, in context of the state, there was a recent bill passed in the General Assembly essentially standardizing the decommissioning requirements for solar across North Carolina. We're one of the first states in the country, if not the first, that has this kind of bipartisan bill that essentially requires any developer ahead of construction to enter into a bond with the state of North Carolina that ensures costs for removal are covered. And in addition, with all of our agreements with our landowners, we have an entire decommissioning clause that requires us to remove our equipment, everything off the property within 12 months of the end of the life. So once that facility stops producing energy, we have to get our equipment off within 12 months. So there's a couple forms of protection. We also have a decommissioning plan that we've submitted to Pitt County that outline, kind of outlines all of the costs for removal, the anticipated salvage value, and a lot of times, the salvage value is essentially covering all of the decommissioning cost. For this one, I believe it was a delta of a few hundred thousand dollars, but that's why we entered into that bond. But to Chris's point, there's a lot of value in these projects at the end of their life, and there's lots of recycling and, you know, kind of restoration companies that are coming as all these solar farms decommission, there is a revenue stream that's being generated.
Thank you, sir, you answer my question.
Okay.
And I will add, as John mentioned, the county does have a requirement for that decommissioning plan, that was included in your packet, it was about an eight to 10-page document that staff felt was very, you know, detailed and felt comfortable with, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's move on, Scott Langdon.
Good afternoon, my name's Scott Langdon, 1828 Brown Hodges Road, Griffin, North Carolina. If you look at the map, I'll be on either side of the solar farm. Now, I know when they built the one down the road from, I live about a mile and a half down the road from the other one, they cut down every tree that they could find, which took away all the windbreak in that area. And I know from living there, I bought my house back when Brown Hodges was dirt, I've been there 33 years. And I know that it can flood in that area from being there in '99, and it does, those canals will overflow. And it's just the fact that I'm going to be looking out the back door and the front door, looking at a solar farm, that irritates me, because I moved out there, I bought my house 33 years ago, like I said, and it was farmland, and I expected to stay farmland, not turn into a industrial subdivision. Plus, in the process of building the other solar farm, they tore the road completely up on Brown Hodges. If you go down, if you see, if you looked at the slide, you saw a big pothole, which the state has never filled up, and they completely tore up Brown Hodges Road down by the other solar farm when they built it. Now, I'm afraid it's going to tear up every road in the neighborhood when they build this other solar farm. So that's pretty much what I have to say, but I'm totally against more, because there's already two solar farms in Griffin, what do we need another one for?
Okay.
That's what I got to say.
Thank you. Angela May?
I'm short, so... Good evening, everybody, thank you for the board for allowing us to come and make our voice on this instance about the solar farm. So I live on East Hammerhand Road, and there are about 90 homes that's going to be affected by this solar farm, and I'm going to kind of piggyback on what some of them said, it's going to be 40 years. 40 years is a long time, and we are against this solar farm due to the fact, we will, when I stand on my back porch, I will see this solar farm, and it's only about 100 feet away, maybe not even that much, and all the other residents would be doing the same. Some are going to be closer to this solar farm on this particular partial. So 40 years is a long time. I'll probably be gone, but what about the children? What about the other families? You know, what about the homes? Will people leave those homes and just let them go back to the earth? We're taxpayers too. We've worked hard, I work with social services, I've done my dues, my husband worked with the Sheriff's Department, we just want to retire and sit back on our back porch and drink a cup of coffee in the morning and not see a solar farm. Now, as far as the vegetation, you go down any of the other ones, the last one, has it just been done? The vegetation underneath these solar panels are brown, the trees are dying, the little bushes that they're planting are this tall. Those trees is going to take anywhere from 10 to 15 years for them to grow tall enough where you won't be able to see it, the solar farm. Think about that. Also, they said that they won't go and have any more projects, they might not, but somebody might piggyback on them, another solar company might come in and say, we want to join with that one and circle around. Pitt County will be full of them. If you don't stop it and stop this rezoning, Pitt County will be full of them, there won't be no more agriculture, we'll have to look for other resources for the food that we eat, we'll have to go to Russia, China, Ukraine. So think about that. We are against the solar farm, and just to let you know, thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, and I'm not sure I can read this handwriting very well, Matt?
Marty.
Marty?
Brinson.
Okay, come on up.
Marty Brinson, 1412 East Hammerhand Road, and I have not been able to hear one word anyone said. I'm about partially deaf, mostly, the only gentleman I could hear was him when he was talking. And for that solar panel to be directly behind my house, which is exactly what it is on the water right-of-way canal, and you're saying 50 feet from my property? You're putting it right in my backyard, I can't even walk out my door and see it, and as far as Brown Hodges Road, I used to tend to the farm on Brown Hodges Road, the Quinley Longino Farm, and the gentleman there talking about that road on Brown Hodges Road tore up, it's definitely tore up. I don't want to spend maybe my next 20 years having to look at that mess. I'm 70 years old now, I'd like for my grandson, who is 44-years-old, to be able to see something besides panels in my backyard. I don't have no use for, I was told there's supposed to have been some study from North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission, that is not so. All they do is send a form and ask, are there any endangered species, plants or animals on that property? I know because I do wildlife rehab, I have it literally in my whole entire life, everything for raccoons, bobcats, deer, beavers, on down and up, along livestock. I don't have to walk out there and look at this mess out my back door. I live directly behind, beside them. I don't, if you want in your yard, put it in your yard, please. I understand the farmers that are wanting to let their land be used because this government doesn't back your farmers anymore. The money will go in their pocket, it's not going in my pocket or anybody else's pocket here. I'm not going to have this money to live off of. It's going to depreciate the value of my property, which is close to three acres, and my ex-husband's property next to me, which is two acres, and my neighbor beside him, who couldn't come tonight because he's having hip problems, just had surgery, he went to your meeting the other night, plus you have your meeting so early, people getting off work can't come, your elevator downstairs ain't working evidently, and I had to walk up here, and I'm due a knee replacement for the second time to go around, had to walk up your steps. But I don't want to look at your mess. If you want, any one of you want in your front yard or backyard, please feel free to do it, but don't do it around my house. It's not going to help my taxes, it may make my taxes go up, so your county can get one. It's not gonna help my taxes, it may make my taxes go up so your county can get more money. And I feel sorry for the farmers, because my sister and her husband farm, and she's done told me the other week, they don't know what they're gonna do because the government doesn't back them, but they definitely would not put a solar panel on their property at all. I'm sorry, I just, you know, I'd probably be right ready for a civil war. That's how I feel about it. I just don't have no use for it. Don't come in my yard, you already, I already pay taxes for people to go in there and clean up that canal, the water right-of-way, who they don't do. They do not clean up that water right-of-way, yet my taxes charged me for every foot of my property on that thing. And you talking about gonna put a tree up there? I'm not gonna be nice, if I keep on, I'll say something negative, they can tell you I got a bad mouth. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brinson, thank you for that. Next, Leslie.
May.
May, thank you.
Look, I just mirror, I just mirror what my wife's saying.
Sorry.
Come right on up here. Yes, sir.
State your name.
My name is Leslie May. I live at 1424 East Henry Hand Road, Aiden, and I just mirror everything my wife said. My wife is Angie May. And I, I, I don't want a solar farm right, right at my back door. I sure don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thomas Cox. Is that right? All right, what about Colin Tarrant?
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, members of the board, my name's Colin Tarrant. I'm an attorney with the applicant. I work for the law firm of Block Crouch in Keeter in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm gonna yield my time, to the extent anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But like I said, I'm legal counsel with the applicant team. I don't think there's anything for me to address right now, other than whether, you know, if a board member has any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer them.
Any questions for anybody?
I have a couple of questions. This is a good time. Are these active food-producing farms right now?
So the question is, the land that this is on, is it actually in crop production? Yes.
Are the sites, the solar farms maintained? Is there staff on duty?
So regarding the, like, post-construction, once it's in its operation and maintenance timeframe, our headquarters based out of Durham, North Carolina, we have, these sites are remotely monitored 24/7 through 65, and we have a site, a facility of this size would require at least a site visit a week, to do a whole perimeter walk, checking for any downed trackers, things of that nature. And we have, one of the largest expenses in the southeast for solar is the vegetative maintenance. And so we have staff within Durham that lead that operation, and there's certain mo cycles all throughout the calendar year that keep that vegetation within spec.
Okay, you said every week?
Yeah, so that's just like a weekly site inspection, you know, with a facility of this size, it's required to essentially make sure the perimeter's secure, gates are in operation, no locks have been cut, fences have been cut, damaged, things like that. And then, as needed, you know, inverters' equipment goes offline, we will dispatch if we can't resolve that issue remotely from Durham. We have regional depots built out all over the state that operate and maintain these facilities, where technicians are an hour or two away, maybe even closer, you know, and we have our, our number and contact right at every gate.
Thank you.
And I'll add to that, county staff does do inspections of all our conditional district rezones every two years to make sure they're still in compliance, screening is still, you know, living. We just completed this last year. As part of that, the solar farms were done, and there were two solar farms that we're working with now where their vegetation died. So that's part of our inspections from a staff level to make sure that everything's staying in compliance as was approved on the, on the site plan.
One more question, I'm not sure who's the right, maybe the staff would be best to answer it. How far, could we see a map that shows where the proposed panels will be placed in context of the residential areas?
Yeah, P O can pull up the map on the screen. So that kind of shows, the circles there, those are the buffers that are required from the residence, and then obviously the red dash line is the rezoning area. You see there is some existing wetlands that, you know, are gonna, cannot be touched, so those will be, you know, remain, you know, and part of our condition, staff recommendation is that to any extent possible, existing vegetation does remain. So, that kind of shows you, I think this is the, the area that has the most residential uses, and as John mentioned, you know, the applicant is willing to, to double what the requirement, and this board can place that as a condition to make sure that they fulfill that, if you also choose that they have to kind of increase the required vegetation outside of Section 10H of the zoning ordinance where there are residences, the board does have that authority to kind of make that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to accept what they've submitted and kind of include that as a condition to make sure that's fulfilled.
Ben, in support of her question.
Yes, sir.
I, I can't tell what's a residence and what's not.
Yeah, so.
By looking at this.
Kind of hard to see, but the circles, there's a square, a rectangle in each of those circles, that's a residence, and then they've put around a 100-foot setback, which is the requirement around each of those residences to make sure they're, you know, outside of that buffer that the zoning ordinance does require. So those circles, there's a residence in each of those along there.
Okay.
Hopefully that helps clarify that.
Ben, so it's a setback from the residence, not from the property line?
Correct, so.
I believe there's a, there's a 50-foot from the property line and 150 feet from residence for inverters.
Right, and then the inverters have that 150-foot. And John, do you mind explaining this for the board, the inverters, what that is and answer your question, sorry.
I'm not worried about the inverters.
Yes, sir.
That was the red dots, I believe.
Correct.
So it's a, it's 150-foot from the residence for the inverters.
I'm gonna read exactly from the zoning ordinance and make, if I can clarify afterwards, let me know. So all equipment and structures shall be a minimum of 50 feet from all property lines and 100 feet from any residence. So those are the structures, equipment, wouldn't include fences necessarily, but it's the equipment and structures, 50 feet from any property line and 100 feet from any residence. So that's what the ordinance lays out.
So a solar panel could be as close as 50-foot to the property line?
Correct, unless it buffered within that 100-foot from a residence, it would have to push out there, but yes, sir, 50 feet.
For clarity, we wrote down yesterday, I mean, whatever did we wrote down?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're talking about the buffer, the trees, I could not see from the ones I saw, was a buffer. They were separated, they were dying. So what is the difference, what is the difference of what you plan to do for these residents that's gonna be different?
And I want the applicant to speak to that, but again, this was in the town of Grifton, so I'm not sure what their requirements are, but.
I'm just giving you some idea.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure, if they are going to talk about buffering, I think I heard that word.
Before we do that, I just want to make sure that everybody that wanted to speak has spoken. I had one more, Mr. Cox, is that? Mr. Tyson. Your name's on here, would you like to speak before we get into any further questions or anything, and then we'll close all public comment at that point and have time for questions.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Thomas Tyson. I'm one of the landowners of this proposed solar farm. The land I own is adjacent to the farm, solar farm next door. I have, we spoke about drainage earlier. I am on the Johnson Milltail Drainage System, been on it since 1999. I am the maintenance officer and the vice president. This land did flood, this land did not. Parts on down further towards Quinley's Cross Road did flood in 99. Some of Grifton Wayley Road and back on Henry Hand flooded in 99. But, we had 16 inches of rain and we had stopped up canals. In the last 20, since 99, my cousin Alton Cannon, which passed away, and myself and the other community members have been working diligently on these canals to help the drainage problem down there. I'm not trying to get on anybody's toes in here, but drainage is not only a problem in southern Pitt County. Drainage is a problem in all of North Carolina and Great Greenville. Tar River only carries a small percentage of water of Greenville. Most of it goes south on Swift Creek to Fayette Springs. This water here goes to Swift, meaning to Grenell Creek. None of it goes into Swift Creek. It goes to Grenell Creek and then goes into the Neuse River. I've been farming, I started farming this farm here in 1995. I purchased this farm in 2002. I was presented with the possibility of this farm becoming a solar farm. And like, the land layout, the type soil it is, nobody wants something that they don't like or not getting any mud out of it in the backyard. I don't have any argument with these people here, I understand where they're coming from. But, when they go home tonight, they're gonna want to cut the lights on, have electricity. When they cut stove on, they're gonna want to have a chicken to eat. You can't fight progress, but so far, if it helps everybody. Have y'all got any question for me?
So you're a part owner of?
My name's Thomas A. Tyson. Yes, sir.
And you're a owner of part of the land that this is going on?
Yes, yes.
And you tend, you actually farm that?
Yes, I actually farm it.
Okay, thank you.
And Christopher Jarvis's land also.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
And I would like an answer to my question.
Okay, hold on, we'll get, we're gonna get that. I'm gonna close the public comment session at this point, now we'll have some questions. So Ms. Anderson, Mr. Eskew, if you'll answer her question there?
Yes, Ms. Anderson, thank you for the question. So, yes, the, the facility that been highlighted in the town of Grifton, I, I can't speak to their landscaping requirements, it's very clear that the fence line is spewable from the highway. You know, all I can say is that we'll be following the county's requirements.
I didn't ask that, my question was, I'm sure you, you have been down there to see what is down there. So my question is, what is the difference that your buffering's gonna be from what I saw yesterday, I mean, the other day? That's all I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am, that's great. As you do. Yeah, so we've got, we, since the meeting last week with the community, we engaged with our, sorry, landscaping consultant, we've come up with a very enhanced plan that it's a lot more than just a single row. It's, it's like, I'm bringing them around, but it's a couple rows of trees and shrubs, and what the, the big change is the mature trees on the back row, kind of on the fence line. Their mature height is up to 60 feet, they won't shade the panels because they're on the north side, but I can't see over trees that tall, these things, you know, evergreens grow pretty aggressively and grow as, as long as they're watered. And thankfully, along this northeastern edge of the property is an existing canal, and there's a lot of potential water that comes into this property from our knowledge. So, from a main, maintain, like a maintenance perspective, the vegetative buffer will be taken care of naturally. And so it's just essentially more aggressive, more plantings, higher mature trees that grow aggressively fast. And I will acknowledge, as an industry, you know, solar hasn't been perfect. I mean, we've had issues with vegetative buffers across several sites in North Carolina. It's a huge concern of the community members because, you know, and this is, we're here today to acknowledge that, but we're doing better by providing these detailed plans, and we're willing to go under, you know, make this a condition of approval, that this, this is, you know, this plan or something like it, that it meets all the satisfactory requirements of the board, the Board of Commissioners, that can be a condition of approval based on the nature of this process.
I just wanted to ask that question because you're here and wanted it approved. I'm sorry, getting COVID. And they, to help, if they would know what the difference would probably be an advantage for you, so that was the reason I asked the question.
Yes, ma'am, and we just got this plan finalized yesterday, I've got the contact information from a few of the members today, happy to get everybody's. You know, we're here to make this project work for all. It needs to be a win for the landowners, the Pitt County, and obviously, you know, us as a developer, we want to make this work, we're here, you know, we're, we're local in Durham. I, I encourage, you know, to watch us and see what we do if this is recommended for approval. I have a lot of accountability in my job and take this stuff extremely seriously.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You can stay, I think my question's gonna be towards you. Just to go all the way back to basics, so just the structure, your company is leasing the land from the landowners?
That's correct. Four of the five landowners we're working with are under leases, there's a small purchase of about 30 acres where the substation is, but everything else is lease.
Okay. In the event that your company sells the solar farm function to another company, do all the binding agreements you've made as far as buffers and maintenance agreements, does that transfer with it, or does that new company then have their own standard?
Yes, sir, so it does transfer all of our standard kind of site control documents, whether it's a lease or purchase. If anybody were to buy rights to Grifton Solar LLC, they are beholden to all of the terms laid out in that lease. So any transfer of a sale or, you know, depending on what we eventually do with this project, our goal is to oper, you know, own and main, operate and maintain as many as possible. But, you know, economies change, you have to make decisions as a business, but everything with, determined with Pitt County, that will follow that Grifton Solar LLC, and anything that we agree to today or, you know, with the Board of Commissioners in November will be, they have to meet those terms, or the zoning permit can be withheld. And it's a conditional rezoning, you apply conditions, if they're not met, you hold on to the permit until they are.
Yes, Mr. Olson.
The, um, there was a previous solar farm that was not constructed due to, they were repeatedly delayed, I understand, and it was due to their reasoning for those delays were mostly primary to the transmission lines from Duke Energy being supplied to that location. How do you anticipate to not run into that type of problem?
That's, that's a great question, and so essentially, when we submit this project to Duke, it's up to them to decide if they want it. Regarding the transmission infrastructure in place, there are a certain amount, when we submit all these projects, they have to assess how much of network upgrades it's gonna take to absorb this power. Thankfully for Grifton, they just installed that 230 KV overhead line for the adjacent solar farm. That is a new line that has ample capacity for another facility. We've measured that with our grid engineering team, that's why we chose this. And I just, to speak to that a little more, you know, as I think Nicole mentioned, when the landowner or adjacent property owners mentioned that Pitt County's gonna become one large solar farm. It's simply, that's just not how this technology works, we are beholden to where Duke Energy's, you know, current infrastructure is, and these are, these are, you know, these are agreements that we work out with the landowners, these are voluntary. They, you know, we essentially, we don't force anything on our landowners, and this is all voluntary. So it's a, essentially a use that they've seen, you know, sufficient for their property and happy to be representing them here today.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other questions for, for anyone? Or comments? Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you, Officer.
I have a further question maybe for our attorney. If, if we were to stipulate a different buffer zone, there's a requirement that's in the ordinance, the company is promising to make it more, double was the word used, how can we frame that so that it's required of this conditional use?
I think if the board is satisfied with what's been passed around showing that increased buffer, that, you know, the condition is placed that in addition to the screening requirements of the zoning ordinance, that if it's certain areas, you know, where those houses are on the northern part of that property, that that buffer that's been presented be required along those, but I would specify that to the best we can to make sure that staff, you know, during our site plan approval and, and approval with the Commissioners, make sure they hear what y'all want them to, to hear based off your recommendation. Yes, sir, and we also do get a signed consent from the applicant after this hearing, if it, you know, the, the conditions that we put in the presentation, that would be added to that, that, that additional screening, the applicant would have to sign that as well, and that kind of binds them to that, if that's the direction the board wants to go.
Promises can be broken.
Fair, that's part of our, you know, the site plan approval, as well as our inspections we do every two years. If it's not, we have a violation process, you know, violation letters, and then, you know, working towards compliance, and we work with our legal staff as a last resort if we can't get a response from that. Yes, sir.
So you're, you're stating that if, if you go back and, and it's broken, can, can it be suspended with their user permit? it be suspended with their user permit?
Well, I think the, the process with that, we, we go through our violation process. I don't know, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the permit's actually pulled.
Typically, it comes on a violation.
Right. Yeah, and if it's a screening situation, we go through our normal violation process, like I said, with letters and working with the applicant. But at the end of the day, our legal staff would work with us to make sure. It's like any other violation we have in the county, it's kind of our last report of the resort, but we do have legal staff, you know, in-house that assists with those planning violations. So this would kind of be treated the same, but typically the permit wouldn't actually be revoked at that time. We would go through the violation process to fix whatever that specific violation was.
All right. Is the board satisfied enough to take a, take a motion or take a vote on this? Ben, could you put up for us what, what the conditions are that we're voting on here? While you're doing that, if we do decide to, I think someone said we could make the double buffer part of a condition, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
What, what, do we do that first?
So our recommendation is the, is the staff's recommendation is approval with the conditions as outlined in section E, 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 the zoning ordinance, and this list of additional conditions, the site plan approval, the vegetation, the soil erosion segmentation control plan, the stormwater nutrient control, the 50-foot riparian buffer, all permits from inspections as well as all permits from NC DOT. In addition to that enhanced buffer, if that's what this board feels, in addition to these recommendations as staff, adding the enhanced buffer along that northern part of the property where the residences are, or as y'all see fit. So we could certainly add that, and that'll be made in the minutes and included with our recommendation to the, the board of county commissioners, so if that makes sense.
So once we vote on it, if it's approved, it goes to the county commissioners for their approval?
Correct, yes, sir. We'll be making a recommendation to the commissioners that are here, the, the November meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can, again, conditional district changes from some of the other operations that you're typically dealing with. So you can impose additional conditions, whether it's buffering. We've heard comments tonight, if you've heard that from the public, that they're really concerned about how close it is. One thing that we also notice, again, you heard about a drainage lateral being along the properties that are along East Hanor Hand Road. That actually affords an additional 20-foot easement. You won't be able to plant in that area, so that buffer's gonna have to be pushed back. But if you wanted to increase setbacks further, you could do that as well as part of your motion. So additional screening, you could add additional setbacks as needed. So that is all per, that's your purview tonight, but ultimately, the group will have to consent to any new conditions that go along with this before it goes to the board of commissioners. So a little bit different process than your standard rezones.
Okay, thank you. So do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we take staff recommendation and approve with the amendments that we've been talking about. I don't know if anybody's got them written down or not.
So a motion's been made to approve with staff's recommendations and also an additional... Mr. Hardy?
The enhanced buffer.
Enhanced buffers.
And didn't you say something about you can move the setback?
Change the setbacks.
Yes.
I'd like to specify that setback, please?
Yeah.
If we, all the additional conditions that the county has proposed, and the proposed vegetation buffer by the company, to increase the setback from the property lines of residences to 100 feet versus 50 feet.
From the residences?
From just the residential property lines.
The property lines.
Property lines.
Property lines.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. A motion and a second has been made. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, planning matters. Mr. Gooby? Envision Pitt County 2045 implementation steps.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna give these folks a minute to step out.
Yep.
I didn't have to have a deputy to join the call.
Okay, so as the boards are aware, our new land use plan, Envision Pitt County 2045, was adopted by the board of county commissioners back in March. Since that time, we have worked on developing a list of implementation strategies. You know, we, the plan has a lot of goals and recommendations. How do we implement those goals and recommendations? So we've been working with our, our planning consultant, Stuart, to come up with these strategies to try to implement those goals and objectives. And with those, we also assigned some, some timeframes for those. We have some that are ongoing tasks, those are things that you see a lot of in our work program when we present it to this board. And we'll kind of go through that a little bit. We also got some short-term tasks, those are the ones that can be initiated generally within one to two years. And then medium and long-term tasks, so those are a little bit further out on the horizon. Typically, we're looking at about two to five years. Some of those may not ever come to fruition, but they're definitely things we can consider and this board can consider in directing us to proceed with. So some of those ongoing tasks, as I mentioned, if you, if you look through our work program for the department, you see a lot of these things. Reviewing proposals for land use consistency, not just with the Envision Pitt County 2045 plan, but also our Southwest Bypass Plan and our NC 43 South Plan. We're going, currently going through a overhaul of our permitting system. We're working on getting some, a new software in, making it a little bit, hopefully a little more convenient for the citizens with some online permitting and online submittals. So we're in the middle of that, that should be coming online sometime next year. Coordinating with utilities as well as NC DOT, the MPO and RPO to sort of encourage growth in defined areas and to prioritize certain improvements for transportation and safety. Administering funds for housing and rehab and replacement, supporting our agricultural activities specifically, like our present use value program and our, our volunteer ag district programs. Promoting and expanding the farmer's market activities. We're currently also working on updating our comprehensive parks and recreation plan. With that also goes enhancements to the district parks. So Alice Keane Park, you know, you probably were working on getting ready to break ground on new community center. I'll talk about that here in just a second as well. Also, just maintaining our general development standards, things like street connectivity, street design, our zoning regulations, keeping those all up to date. And then doing our stormwater management and making sure that new development is, is adhering with our requirements for that. Some of the short-term tasks that we've got, development regulation updates, possibly enhancing things like our conditional zoning regulations, like what we talked about tonight. You know, trying to make sure that, that the board and the staff can, can provide certain conditions on uses that may be more beneficial to, to residents and developers alike. Also things like open space and buffers, making sure that we're enhancing those regulations. One thing we heard during development of this plan was also improving internet access in underserved areas of the county, particularly north of the river. Construction, as I said, the community centers at the district park and the county office park, just had the groundbreaking for the office park this week. The groundbreaking for the Alice Keane District Park will be next week. So those are coming online within the next year to two years. Also collaborating with the cooperative extension and expanding our agriculture-related education programs. Seeking legislation to reinstate subdivision-street maintenance bonds so that we can ensure that streets remain up to standard so they can eventually be taken over by the state for maintenance. Conducting feasibility studies for priority greenways.
I just have a question for you, Eric.
Yes, sir.
My understanding is that the legislature did away with that and, and you're seeking that to reinstated?
Possibly, yes, sir. Could seek, we could seek special legislation.
Because that was really a stupid idea when they did that. I just want to say that for the record.
Doily note, thank you, sir. But as I said, feasibility studies for priority greenways, particularly like from Greenville to Washington, the district park, is, is, is properties around the district park developed, we want to make sure that we're getting connections to the park through greenways. Also the office park, the new development around that community center and the new recreation opportunities there, making sure that we can connect that park to other recreation opportunities like River Park North or Wildwood Park. And then also updating our water supply watershed regulations so that they're, so the new development is in compliance with the state requirements. Our medium to long-term task, things that we're looking at, again, these are kind of our longer-term forecast items, they're not things that we're necessarily have the pieces in place to do right now, but things that we could consider in the future. Performance-based zoning criteria for certain industrial activities, maybe things like solar farms, if there's additional setbacks needed in certain circumstances, those are things we can look at. Updating regulations to encourage more conservation subdivisions, and as this board probably recalls, that's where we allow our smaller minimum lot size in exchange for more open space area in those subdivisions. Small area plans for larger crossroads communities, you know, some of these areas like, like Belvoir or Chikad, you know, what is the appropriate, what are the appropriate, or what's the appropriate development strategy for areas like that? Or, you know, what, what's the appropriate type of growth that should be occurring in those areas? So might look at that thing, that, those sorts of things. An enhanced voluntary agricultural district, just to give farmers that are in the program a few more benefits to being in that program. Identifying locations for new farmers markets to try to get more people access to healthy fruits and vegetables and those products. And then updating our land use regulations to reduce impact between agriculture and residential developments, because as, as we've seen, you know, as you get new development that occurs around these, these agricultural communities, that it has an impact and, and people aren't necessarily always ready for that, especially the farmers when they have complaints coming in about the agricultural activities that they've been doing for years. Also looking to improve our public engagement strategies to increase participa- participation of minority groups. We were just at the planning conference this week and there was a great deal of information about, or talk about engagement processes and trying to get sort of underserved populations involved. So a lot of good things we can possibly take from some of those things. Coordinating with transit providers and considering enhancement of bus service along key corridors so we get people to have more access to the services they need. I skipped one also, addressing the geographic barriers to healthcare. We know that as people, if, when people can access healthcare, they do access it, they go to it and they use it, they seek out those services. But there's a lot of folks that don't have transportation to healthcare, or they live in areas that don't, they don't have easy access to it. So we'd like to try to work with our public health department, maybe ECU Health, to try to address those issues. And then also, lastly, studying new river access points. You know, the river's a, a major natural resource in the county and it's also a major recreational opportunity. And it, it's a resource that belongs to everybody in the county, so we want to make sure that everybody has availability and access to it. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Well, that's a lot of tasks.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
And I hope you can get it all done by year 2045. I do recognize a lot of the things that came up in the public sessions we had, so, you know, that's certainly, certainly positive. So anybody else have any other comments for Eric?
I just want to add, like I said, these were sort of our top ones from the, the, from the list of steps. There's a lot more information in your packet that, that's got the full report of everything. I would be glad to answer any questions and if anybody has any thing they'd like to discuss about it, we'd be glad to hear that.
Great. And I think, too, you've put together an extensive list and done a great job. And I can hardly wait to get all that real service thrown in. That's a long-term project.
That is very long-term, yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Rogers, you're up again. Comprehensive transportation plan update.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Do have a brief update for a project we've been working on for several years now. It's the comprehensive transportation plan update for the county. Just a brief reminder of what that is. So comprehensive transportation plan, this is a long-range multimodal transportation plan. It's been developed cooperatively among local stakeholders, such as businesses and residents, the Greenville Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Mid East Rural Planning Organization, Pitt County, the municipalities within Pitt County, as well as NC DOT. This plan will determine transportation needs and will assist in making transportation decisions for the next 25 to 30 years, and this is required by NC general statute. So just a background and catch-up on what we've completed so far. So we started this in September of 2020. So like I said, this is kind of drawn out as we work with DOT to kind of finalize this plan, but we are nearing the end stages of it. But a steering committee was formed in September 2020. We've held monthly meetings, we've taken some meetings off as needed. And that steering committee does provide updates and inputs on the plan. In spring of 2021, I believe we updated y'all at that time, but we completed a public input survey that had just under 1,800 participants. And then last November, we held two public input sessions, both at North Pitt High School and the Community Schools and Recreation Building out on County Home Road, that had some pretty good attendance at both of those and provided great feedback from the community. So remaining steps, NC DOT is currently completing an internal review of the document, so we've got all the information prepared. They're gonna be working with a consultant to kind of make the document pretty, as they say, to kind of create that visual core. The steering committee is scheduled to meet next Monday for our monthly meeting. Then we're gonna take a couple of months off to give everybody a chance to review that final document and meet again in January to review and endorse that draft document. We will then be going out to all the municipalities to get their hopeful endorsement of that plan before the county finally does adopt it and endorse that in early spring next year. So we do have a working website, some of the documents on there, the working maps, the draft recommendation list, draft project sheets, and draft supporting analysis. And just to give you an update or a visual of one of those projects, so this is the first project, this is kind of how each of those projects is laid out on the project sheet, so it shows you what the, identifies the project, the location of it, the identified need, and then the recommendation. So this is US 13 from Edgemont County to 264, and the recommendation is to upgrade the freeway standards for vision of statewide transportation corridor X. And it kind of shows you that typical section there on the right. So again, this is a very long-term plan. Oftentimes, you know, you need to have some of these projects and recommendations in a plan so that when funding is available, that need can be shown there. So that's kind of what this project has been focused on. And again, kind of drawn out, but we are getting closer to it and hope to have this thing finally adopted in early spring of 2024. So we do have a project website there, you can get more information. Happy to answer any questions you may have otherwise, but we did want to provide a brief update on this project we've been working on. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Ben.
All right, thank y'all.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir. So that is a three and a half year planning process for that document, so we've been at it for quite a while, 18 committee meetings?
Yes, sir. No, 21 next week.
I lost count, 21 next week. So again, we've been at it for a while, it ought to be a very thorough plan when we complete. So, a few things, right on the top of our list for our departmental work program coming up over this current fiscal year, which started for us in July, is the comprehensive transportation plan. We got to get that thing completed because it's been on our docket for quite a while. We've got a new permitting software package that most of the planners in our office have been working on. This also coordinates with inspections, environmental health, emergency management. It is a big undertaking, so we've had our current permitting system for well over 10 years. It needs an overhaul. Eric's mentioned a lot of things going on with parks and recreation, we're excited about that. We've got another building, we had a great groundbreaking out at the north campus, our office park campus on Monday. We'll be at the Alice F. Keane District Park this coming Monday for our twin community centers groundbreaking. So we're excited about having a gym at our district park as well. A lot of updates going on at the district parks in addition. Some of the things we'll be bringing forward to you later, stormwater ordinance updates, water supply watershed order, ordinance updates, that's coming your way. Also, we're actively involved with another buyout program through FEMA where some of these repetitive, repetitively flooded properties are being bought out. The homes are demolished after buying them out for fair market value, and then that property is no longer allowed to be developed, so it remains as open space. So we are actively involved with Hurricane Florence's buyout program, and you guess it, that's about five years ago, so these people have been very patient in trying to get this funding. We do have a number of housing and homeless programs that we're running out of our office. We are getting supplemental funding through the American Rescue Plan Fund. Our Board of County Commissioners have allocated a certain amount to some of those programs, so we'll be actively involved with that. One of the biggest wins for us is replacement housing. We haven't had any replacement housing funds in quite a number of years. And- We haven't had any replacement housing funds in quite a number of years, and some of the people that have qualified for our programs, their homes are beyond repair, they need a replacement home, so we're excited about moving forward with some of that. Other informational items that kind of back up some of the things that we've talked about, our Parks and Rec Division, as we're bringing on those community centers, we're now in discussions with Pitt County Schools about community schools and recreation staff moving over, and the county having its full recreation staff to man those sites, as well as some of our other activities. We do have, as Eric's mentioned, a master plan underway for our Parks and Recreation, that's going to be a big undertaking for us. The contract awards, you've seen, these construction costs have really gone up, but we're pleased with the amount of building we're getting for the prices that we've gotten for both the community center north of the river, as well as the one at the district park. And it is the year of the trail, Mr. McGlawn Horn, an official action by our legislature, this is the year of the trail in North Carolina. So on this Saturday, October 21st, out at our, out at our district park, we'll have two great trail state, trail walks at our district park, Saturday morning, 9:00 or 10:30, come out if you get a chance, it is going to be a great day out at the park. So, and if you can't make it that day, that park is open every day, so get out there if you can. Few other things included, and certainly your departmental reports are included, if you just want to see a snapshot of some of the development activity, and plenty of other correspondences included as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, and I'd also like to echo, thank you, former chair, for your great service over the last two years. We look forward to having you on the sidelines, adding a lot more commentary to our discussions. So, Mr. Chair, that's all we've got for tonight.
Okay. Any other comments before we entertain a motion to adjourn? Yes, I do. Let me, let me just make a couple of comments. And saying, you each have had some kind of comments to say to me tonight, but let me just share back, I do appreciate the privilege and honor that you and the former board members for the last two years afforded me to be your chairman. And in saying that, what I enjoyed was the fact that I had your support, the service that you provided to the county, and also your attendance, because we need that attendance to be able to hold our meetings, okay? So please, let's support of the Devonport as we go forward, and I know he will appreciate that, too. But also, James, I appreciate you and your staff, the staff for keeping us on the square, okay, if you would, and then when I look at guys like Eric and Ben and Jonas and Eli, and, I mean, you guys just do a great job, and I appreciate what each one of you's done, and I thank you, and I'm going to be here another year to hopefully go on, and then I'll finish my term, okay? Thank you, sir. Well, thank you for those comments, you let us adjourn, all feeling good about ourselves, so that's a good, that's a good thing.
Good, man, you should.
Thank you, you should. Motion to adjourn?
So good.
Second.
All right.